Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're conducting business today, work session via teleconference. This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available later on Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the City YouTube channel. Just a reminder for everyone, the work sessions give the council an opportunity to review items on its today's agenda, as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed for the council's consideration. These meetings are informal and no official actions are taken. At 11 o'clock, we'll have an update from the EMA Director and the Fire Chief. So we'll look at today's agenda first. We have one item of unfinished business, and this is item number nine. A is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget that was presented last week for first reading. Item 10 is a resolution electing directors of the Edward Gaston Healthcare Authority, and the city appointed two members to the board. And this resolution reappoints Marie Franklin Johnson and Rebecca Walker. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Police Department, the East Central Alabama Highway Safety Office, and the City of Opalaka, and relates to grants for the traffic safety enforcement. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Mytell. This is for the upgrade of the telephones, hardware, and software for various departments and buildings within the city. Item 13 is an ordinance amending the City Code, Section 18-1B. This is relating to rental property inspection to increase the price for re-inspections from $15 to $50. We have two requests to speak. We have Howard Gilbert has requested to speak regarding property on Gaston Avenue, and we have Ms. Sharon Maness has requested to speak regarding resources for students. Are there any questions or comments from the councils concerning today's agenda? So if not, we'll move to the items that have been routed to the mayor and forward to the council. And I believe we have two items, three, or two items. The first one is a resolution authorizing participation in the Alabama League of Municipalities Economic Development Academy. And this approves the city's application, which is a year-long commitment. And the league has designed this academy to enhance economic development in cities across the state. So would I be, I know Councilman Williams has been interested in this. So do you mind addressing this, Councilman Williams?
I don't, I don't mind at all. It's, so the league this year engaged in the development of an Economic Development Academy, and they're asking cities to participate. There are a couple of things that are driving the league developing such a program. One is, of course, we, they honestly believe that there's a great opportunity to help develop some of the talent relative to economic development in the state, and to familiarize cities more with how that whole process works. And the second thing is it's going to serve as a, it's going to serve as a, as an opportunity for cities to tap resources that they normally don't have access to in the development of some of their local economic development projects. So this will give us an opportunity in partnership with Gaston State Community College and with some of our other economic development partners to be a part of the inaugural class and to gain some valuable insight. So it's a great opportunity for us, and I just thought it'd be good for us to take advantage of it.
All right. Are there any, any comments or questions from the council, other council members concerning this?
I guess, well, the only other thing that I left out is that it does, part of the application process does require that we pass a resolution from the elected body committing us to participate.
And I believe it's not only a good thing because they've talked about it and they've presented programs at the league meetings, conferences that we've had. So this will be a big thing for the city to be able to participate in the academy. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next resolution. And this is a resolution authorizing agreement with the State of Alabama Department of Revenue. And this relates to the exchange of tax returns and information between the city and the Department of Revenue. Are there any questions concerning that? Does Ms. Ross need to address that in any way?
Madam President, if Ms. Ross could maybe give a high-level comment on this, I'm not sure if I understand what we're doing here. I've read the papers that were provided, but I'm not really tracking with what we're doing. If anybody could give some insight, I would be appreciative.
Is Ms. Ross on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
All right. If you'll just give us a little snippet of this resolution.
I'll be glad to. Actually, this agreement with the State of Alabama and the Department of, actually, the State Department of Revenue and the City of Gaston is one that, to my understanding, is throughout the state of Alabama with all municipal governments. And this goes a long ways back. It refers to Section 40-2A-10 of the Code of Alabama of 1975, which enforces the agreement. But what they did in the general session, legislative session in 2019, the Act, which is 2019-101, changed this agreement, just some wording and some different things in it. I guess they basically just tried to clean it up a little. So because of that, they have sent this to all municipal governments, saying that we have to update our agreement with the Department of Revenue, State Department of Revenue. And so basically, this is just updating Rule 8010-14-1-29, which there again, as Dr. Toles says, all this does is allow us to exchange information of tax returns and information of that sort with the State of Alabama.
Ms. Ross, so just, I mean, everybody else may understand this. I just want to make sure I do. So, so is it safe, or are you comfortable laying out a scenario where we would be required to utilize this?
Um, yes, I could. So we, for one thing with business licenses, if you have a business and your business is under, not so much a federal tax ID number, but you're using your social security number, one way that we have to verify the information as far as their gross receipts for that business, or basically any information, is by use of a tax return. Another thing also, which we do not participate in, but the Alabama League has a recovery program that I know some of you are well aware of. This goes back when Shane was here. We do not use this, but they have a system where they can withhold things that are owed to the City of Gaston, such as garbage bills, any type of delinquent bill that we might be, a transfer bill. Basically, a business license, sales, anything that they have that this individual or business might owe to us, we can have it deducted from their Alabama state income tax. And there again, like I said, we do not participate in that program, but we could. And that is one of the ways that the state uses this agreement. And a lot of other cities do actually, do actually have that program in place.
Mr. Roberts, do you mind turning your camera on? I just, I just want to see your face.
And I'm sure what he's going to say. I know three people are in agreement with it.
Well, I know how to unmute. What's up?
You muted, Councilman Williams.
Yeah, I didn't really intend to put you on the spot. I'm just, I am interested in seeing the look on your face as you listen to Ms. Ross's commentary.
Oh, well, I mean, like I've said before, I'm very uncomfortable catching somebody's, you know, income tax returns without a judgment because there's been no due process. Simply because the city says something is due doesn't mean there is due process as far as the person we're collecting from. And I have called down extensively, I have emailed, and no one's really been able to answer that question. I think what we should do is if, like in the garbage collection, if we, if we can have documentation showing how much a person is owed, and we take that to court and we get a judgment, then I think we can use that. But I think the problem has been is it's on the accounting side of trying to figure out precisely the amount it's due. And we have these figures that I remember when a long time ago, everybody talks about how much the garbage, we're owed on garbage, but as far as identifying exactly who owes what and going back and putting that in a format that we can prove and present in court, that has been an issue.
Well, Lee, do you, do you see the fact that there are a number of other municipalities already participating in that recovery program? Do you see that as sufficient cover for us if we were to decide to move forward with something like that?
No. I mean, I would like to have my questions answered, and I posed this to the league, by the way. You know, if someone in the, in the revenue or somewhere in any department in the City of Gaston says that I owe a bill and attaches my income tax return and that money, of course, I mean, there's, and then I come in and I show, well, that wasn't me, that was my brother, and now you've taken my money. I've got a good lawsuit because there's been no due process attaching my money. And what's funny is on this recovery act is there's specific provisions in there. When that happens, there's no liability at the state level. It's 100% liability at the municipal level. So what I'm saying, before we avail ourselves to a program like that, we've got to be 100% sure we're being accurate, and we've got to have, and I want to have a, because if people not paying a garbage bill, and you take that, say I've got 100 people hadn't paid a garbage bill, and I take that to court, and I guarantee you that 100 people are not going to show up, and I'll get judgments on these people. And then I'll, then at that point, I can try to, assuming I've got a good social security number for these people. But there again, if I attach, try to attach funds to somebody and we don't have accurate records of somebody different than I've got that owes the money, then we're looking at real liability. And those are questions I posed. No one's been able to answer satisfactorily how we can absolve ourselves of that potential liability.
Lee, how do we get released from liability?
Well, when you step in the arena, you, you know, you're putting yourself at risk for liability.
The state legislature would have to, go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's a simple concept. I mean, it's like if, if we go and we get a judgment against somebody, then that, and then that alleviates the due process liability. And assuming we've got correct information on these people, we've written down their social security numbers correctly, database correctly, and we then avail ourselves to the system to attach any returns they have. And we also record the judgment at the courthouse. So if they have any property transactions, then, then that becomes a lien on their real estate. I think that we're, you know, we've done what we need to do to protect ourselves from liability. But I mean, we, you know, if we want to do this, I think we need to gather, like especially the garbage bills. I mean, that's, that's the main thing, what I've heard. And if we want to go that route, we need to, to, you know, garner up 100 delinquent accounts and have the precise amounts, the months they were due, you know, the precise data to attach to our complaint and file a lawsuit, and get a judgment, and then collect.
I see your point.
You know, I'm just, I'm concerned about the prospect of collecting before you get a judgment. You know, collecting before there's due process. Just because government says you owe money doesn't mean you owe mine. It's nice if you're able to go to court and defend yourself.
But, but Lee- Can you, as a law, you're not writing something into this resolution, driving us of liability? You've got a week to do that.
I wish I could. I'd say, look, from now on, the cities have gained from any liability whatsoever.
We're talking about two different things here. We're talking about the intercept program, which is-
That's precisely what I'm talking about, Lisa. That's precisely what I'm talking about.
Yes, and which has nothing to do, actually, with the resolution that you have in front of you. So, because we do not participate in the intercept program, so.
And Lee, this is right. I mean, I just, I took the opportunity, just based on her example, I took the opportunity to bring that up. Lee, I really didn't expect you to say that much about it. But it's definitely something that I think all of us are interested in. Again, there are a number of cities that are participating, most of which are participating with the understanding that they're doing so legally. And so, you know, I think there are answers to the questions that you have. I think they're valid questions, but we just need to run, run that to ground. I, I don't, I know everybody's plate's full, but I really would like to, I really would like to make that a priority going forward, so that if we are, if we do get comfortable with being a part of the recovery effort, that, that we can start to participate as soon as possible. I mean, is it fair, Lee, for us to revisit this in, say, maybe a couple of weeks?
Well, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I have, I've attended seminars, and I have made phone calls to the guy who wrote the program, who basically said, well, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't really know the answer to that question. And then, and then I posed a question to the league and not gotten any adequate response. Now, you know, what, if we want to avail ourselves of this program, what I would suggest is that, for example, in garbage, that they get a list of 100 people who have delinquent accounts or aren't paying, have adequate data, spreadsheets, months that, you know, that what was due and what was owed, something that is, you know, factual, that it can be based on, a judgment can be based on. And, and let's go into district court, because most of these are going to be district court cases, and file, you know, and file a case and have a day, it'd be a whole day in court. And then if, and I guarantee you, 90% of the people will, if they're not bothered to pay their garbage bill, they're not going to bother to show up at court and get a judgment and, and record those judgments and try to intercept funds and see how that works.
So I have a question, if you don't mind. So like today, Fay, our garbage collection supervisor, is in municipal court with garbage collection cases. Lee, I mean, that's, that's, it's municipal court, but still, those people are getting judgments, well, in some cases, the people are getting judgments against them. Is that, does that not suffice for what you're saying?
It would, if it's not appealed and if there's, are there amounts on there?
Sure, there are.
That is owed, I mean, that would suffice.
Sure, there are, yes.
But Lee, just for the sake of example, even if those items didn't exist, there's still due process. And I think that's, that's kind of at the core of what the concern is. There's still due process that we can, that we can point to.
Well, if they're sent, yeah, if it's in city court and we received a judgment, then that's a valid judgment. And that's something that there's been due process, and we could send those down, you know, those that are, that we've got a judgment on, that we have, that haven't collected, we can send those to the intercept program.
Well, I'd like to weigh in just a little bit. You know, what, what we're talking about here, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got close to $900,000 in garbage bad debt. So we're not, we're not talking about just nickels and dimes here. And this is a systemic problem. I think about every 18 months, it probably totals around $900 to $1 million in garbage bad debt that the City of Gaston just writes off our books. And we're talking about being afraid of being sued by somebody. I mean, you know, the average bill is $13 a month. So if we get it wrong one time, how much can they sue us for? And what liability do we have? Meanwhile, we're consistently eating about $1 million every 18 months, and I think it's time that we stand up and we stop this. We can't do this. If this was a business, we wouldn't dare let this go on like this. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing something to eradicate this $1 million that we talked about kind of flippantly, because we're afraid of getting sued. Maybe we need to get sued. Maybe we need to fight this. Maybe people will wake up. I mean, doing the same thing that we've been doing and expecting different results is not, is not working.
Right. And I think we're running, I think we're, we're not G-hawing here. Is if we're going into city court, if we're obtaining judgments and not, money judgments, and they're not being collected, then that's, in my opinion, that is, that's ripe for this intercept program, okay? Now, if I'm going and I'm intercepting your tax return without affording you ability to say, hey, you know, that's not me, or you're wrong, or having, you know, then I think that is a violation of the Constitution. And if we have a systemic practice of doing that, and, and, and we get brought to city court, I mean, to federal court on that, then you're talking major bucks. So I mean, I'm just, a little bit of prevention is all I'm, all I'm, I'm saying.
And I think it's wise to take small steps, but I think we need to take some steps. It's just, I think the word on the street is you don't have to pay your garbage bill because they're not going to do anything about it. So I mean, this, this is a lot of money. We're sitting here looking at a budget, and people want more money, and there's, there's money that we're writing off our books, and that's taxpayer money, that's not our personal money. We need to, I think we need to tighten the belt there just a little bit somehow. And this probably needs to go to the Public Works Committee, and it needs to be studied there, and then needs to come back maybe to the full council with, you know, with some, some kind of an action.
No, I agree. I mean, if we're, I mean, it's news to me that we're getting these judgments, and I did not know that. But if we're getting the judgments and we can't collect them, if Lisa comes over and says, look, we got all these judgments and we can't collect them, can you help me? I certainly, certainly will help.
Sure, sure. Well, I'm glad to hear that. And I think we have a fiduciary responsibility as, as elected council members to pursue this. I mean, we just can't sit back and every year just write off, you know, $500,000, $700,000 in bad debt on garbage pickup. It's just ridiculous.
So, so Lee, I understand that there's a lot legal-wise on the plate right now, and, you know, don't want to be piling on, but. So I will ask, as opposed to, to just kind of assigning a date, I'll ask, is two weeks out sufficient for us to kind of formalize the discussion to move forward with this?
Did you want to go into Public Works Committee? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know if that's the right committee, but I do think it's a committed discussion. I just don't know if Public Works is the right committee. Maybe, maybe Finance or Admin.
Well, I mean, it's, my understanding of program, if we, say if I get 100 delinquent accounts we got judgments on, where there's been due process as far as me signing for the internet, or the intercept program, and submitting those delinquent accounts, I don't think that's going to take any time at all. That's easy.
Ms. Ross, do you know approximately how many cases that, that we're taking to court each week?
I have no idea. I know that she's in court today. She's in court almost every Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay.
This is one problem with the world. There's no consequences. People do what they want to, and they don't want to go by the rules, and they don't care because nothing ever happens to them. Until we crack down on some of that stuff, it'll continue on.
And, and I'm not sure, and I don't want to muddle the waters here in any way whatsoever. I obviously said something that was, I should not have said.
No.
But, you know, the intercept program is, is a program, and we have lots, or we did at one time have details on it, and we can get as much detail as y'all want to on the program. And I likewise, Shane and I went to many seminars on the program. But the program is for the use of intercepting money off of an income tax return for a lot of delinquent things. One of the things that I know a lot of other cities use it for is bad checks. I mean, I don't know if y'all understand, but I just pulled it out because I thought, okay, I want to make sure that I give you the facts. But in return checks, which, you know, you can, you can send a return check, a bad check, to the DA's office. But we've got return checks that have been at the DA's office for probably years, and a lot of times, they never get collected on. But in our garbage, in the garbage fund, we have return items of over, almost $3,000. And, you know, and we're talking about a $13 a month or $39 bill. So that, that's a lot of returns to add up to those, that kind of money. And I know a lot of cities use that for, and there again, I think there's a lot of discussion that has got to take place because to Lee's, of what Lee is saying, there's no judgment on a bounce check, you know? I mean, I have the documentation. I have a bounce check in my hand, but there's no judgment against that. As would be the same thing with sales tax, where people are delinquent on sales tax, you know, liquor tax. I mean, the program can be used for a lot of different delinquent fees or taxes that are due. So I think we have to sit down and have an in-depth conversation as to exactly, you know, what can or what we cannot do based off of Lee's understanding.
Lee, all you had to do was turn your camera on.
Hello?
Yeah, all you had to do was turn your camera on.
I hear you.
But there again, let me make it clear. It has nothing to do with this resolution that is before you today.
Yes.
This, to be honest with you, I was trying to sit here and think. I cannot think of a, of a case where we have actually used this agreement with the Department of Revenue. You know, so.
But, but again, with, in the past two years, we've had a litany of collection scenarios for small businesses that were delinquent.
Yeah.
And so it's, it hadn't happened yet, but it's, it's kind of-
I have a question, Doc.
Yes.
If we've had this tool, and we've been having this problem all this time, why were we not using it? At least on a test case basis?
Assistant President Toles, I can respond to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, again, Lee's, Lee's concerns are not small by any stretch. They're, they're very valid. And to be quite honest, for some time, he's been in conversations with, with the league about that very thing. But to his point, you know, he hasn't adequately had his questions or concerns addressed. And, you know, so what'll come out of this conversation is another attempt to have those concerns addressed. But he's got some very valid legal concerns, and honestly, he's not going to say it, but I will. He's put a lot of time and effort into reviewing. This tool didn't just pop up. It's been there. It's something we've, we've tried to take advantage of for some time. We've tried to take advantage of for some time. We just haven't reached a comfort level, uh, to do it, uh, so. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of hit the gas a little bit on on those efforts and try to move forward with utilizing the program. But it's, it's been there, but there's a valid reason why we haven't tapped into it yet.
Yeah, because when I first came, go ahead.
Okay.
Councilman Reed.
Oh, I can think back on times when we hired a company to come in here and handle this, and Lisa knows. We spent a lot of money on that. We picked up garbage cans. We tried everything in the world. I go back to what Kent said earlier and Debbie. What we need to do is put this thing in finance committee. Let Lee present his part, and let's get this done right once and for all, and forget all these sideline things. We've, we've wasted a lot of time and a lot of money on a lot of different things trying to solve this. Now, I understand people, people who aren't going to pay aren't going to pay. If you pick the garbage can up, they put it in the neighbors. So I would, I would hope we put it in finance and just resolve it once and for all on a legal basis.
Any other, any other questions? And, you know, and I agree, when I first came on, this one, this one point million dollars just didn't happen this year. Back in twenty sixteen, it was going on, and that's when Mr. Ellison and I, I went, I went to the league conference. Uh, that's when I heard about the program and we came back with it, but I agree with you. So we'll put it in finance, uh, committee. And have a discussion. It may not become to fruition in two weeks, but we need to have a discussion as to. What we can do and make sure we do it legally. Uh, at this time, uh, we have an update from the, uh, superintendent, uh, Superintendent Reddick. And this is, uh, this is a request from the, uh, well, from the council. It's, uh, something that the superintendents have been doing down through the years, and so we knew that last year there was. Uh, COVID, and so I just said to, uh, Ms. Nelson that we wouldn't, uh, sort of bother the school system. So since they're back, sort of, uh, probably some virtual, but since they're back in business, we were just going to ask. Uh, Superintendent Reddick to come in and just give us an update of how things are going.
Hey, good morning. Good morning. Everyone can hear and see me all right, well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and report to you. Uh, let me start with COVID to 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 begin with. First of all, everything's going pretty well, so to as we can tell, you know, depends on, uh, what Facebook page you're looking at on a given day or. Wherever, wherever, you know, park or bar or wherever you happen to be when you hear news about school system. But we're doing well. Let me start with, uh, the COVID first of all. Uh, I want to mention that, well, we of course were one of only two. School systems in District Six who, uh, that, uh, required masks to start the school year. Um, we were one of fifty-eight around the state, out of a hundred and forty-four in the state who required masks. And now you're finding about eighty-five to ninety percent of the schools are requiring masks. Uh, the results of us doing it from the very beginning are as follows. Let me share with you, I do a, um, COVID report for our staff and our school board. A couple of times a week, so as of yesterday, September the twentieth, uh, the report reads as such. And we, we start our school year on August the twelfth, and so far we have had a cumulative two hundred and thirty-five positive cases of COVID nineteen. Uh, we have a staff and student population of five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine in our school system. So of those two hundred and thirty-five, uh, cumulative cases, that's right at about four point four percent. Two hundred and twelve of those are students. We have a population of four thousand seven hundred and sixty students in our school system. So two hundred and twelve of those cases are students. We have, uh, six hundred and twenty-eight staff members, that's teachers, custodians, lunchroom and so on. And only twenty-three of those who have been affected, uh, with COVID since August the twelfth, uh, that's at about three point seven five percent. Today's the twenty, yesterday rather, was the twenty-seventh day of school. Uh, today is the twenty-eighth, and we did have, uh, nine cases over the weekend. Which will not be reflected in this report. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll do that tomorrow so that I can give that to EMA. Um, but, uh, today, yesterday being the twenty-seventh day of the school year, um. We, according to our, our day eighteen enrollment, by the way, that's where the four thousand seven hundred and sixty students, uh, cut, uh, you know, was recorded. Uh, uh, what what's important to remember here is that all staff members and students infected before September the tenth. Uh, are back at work or school, so they're no longer infected. They're, they're healed, if you will. Uh, therefore, the, that that number, the two hundred and five, of the, of the two hundred and thirty-five cases reported. Two hundred and five of those students and staff are already back at work. They're no longer infected with 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 COVID. You know, so that's, that's eighty-seven percent. Um, and again, these are individuals who who, uh, who were reported before September tenth, that ten-day to fourteen-day, uh, period, destination periods, you will. And so therefore, we're only thirty members of our students and staff, student and staff population, not including the nine from over the weekend. Uh, who are, uh, actively infected with COVID nineteen or they're quarantined or whatever have you, out of the five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine active cases. That's a point five six percent infection rate. It's a point five six percent infection rate. That's six tenths of a point above half of one percent. Uh, I know that there was some discussion not too long ago. About us having, uh, a, 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 a threshold, uh, and a, and a alternate instruction plan. We, we've always had a threshold of five percent. I believe that when that discussion took place, it was a result of a newspaper article published at AL dot com. Where I was asked about an infection rate, but I informed them that we have not, uh, we did not make an official notification of that infection rate. That we were just going to go on with, with the same as we had previous year, which was five percent. So at a five percent infection rate, we will go into an alternative plan for instruction, remote or virtual. Virtual has always existed. Um, we, we have students who are in virtual, taking, utilizing the virtual plan right now. Uh, we will go into a remote plan when necessary. Again, that'll be at five percent. So we're doing well as far as COVID is concerned. Clearly, having had, you know, uh, two hundred and thirty-five, uh, total cases cumulative. Seems like, it's like a large number, but we've been able to survive, uh, you know, with, uh, making adjustments in the classrooms to. In 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 event that there were teachers out, and certainly, you know, adjusting for students being out as well by providing, you know, instruction. At home, not necessarily on a remote basis. So that's, that's kind of our COVID report. We do that, uh, every week and sometimes twice a week because I try to prepare it for our, uh, staff on Monday. And try to prepare it for EMA on Tuesday so that I can present it on Wednesday morning before the Wednesday afternoon numbers come out. Uh, so, so I think we're doing well. Uh, in that regard, as you, as you well know, from a budgetary standpoint, we have had to deal with, uh. A lot of, uh, learning loss, and in fact, everybody's already aware that, you know, you know, all the school systems and various other entities around the country. Have received federal fundings, ARP, FF-CRA and so on, um, and that, that money has been intended for making up for. Learning loss primarily and to obviously mitigate, uh, you know, of infection safety. And so what, what we've done with, uh, uh, with that money, as a matter of fact, uh, this past year, this year rather, our ESER three funds. Total is twenty-one million dollars. When we put out our requests from our staff and students in regards to what we felt we needed to do. In and around our school system, we actually went a little bit above the budget in terms of 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 requests. So we had to narrow down some of those requests and we had to make some changes, of course, to those, uh, uh, those requests to to get under. The twenty-one million dollars that was, uh, allotted to to us. And of course, you know, we've had SO one and SO two money already been accounted for, spent and what have you. Uh, got a list of some of the things that we basically used that money for. Uh, first of all, and 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 let me, I know this has come up as well in regards to, in fine arts, obviously. The monies that, uh, we get from, from city council and your budget primarily have been used for, uh, fine arts teachers as well as, uh, 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 uh. Tech support and, um, we, the, the monies for, for, from, uh, ESER were not intended, I want to use this term correctly. Were not intended for fine arts, uh, instruction. Were not intended for that. However, uh, we, we had an early beat on it, early lead that we probably weren't going to be funded by the city council. So we made a request and we had to provide a narrative and a, you know, rationale, if you will, for trying to include that into our. Uh, budget when we made the adjustments, and we're happy now to know that that's, that's probably going to be approved. So we will now be able to use, uh, that money for fine arts simply because we've been able to justify. Using it for loss of learning. In other words here, fine arts is not just about playing instruments and painting pictures and all those kinds of things. We had to incorporate a, a, a narrative in there where we show we were going to be using mathematics, we were going to be using language arts. And so we were able to include it for that reason. So as of, as of today, we are, are able to, to, to fund some of our fine arts. With some of that money. Uh, had to just kind of take some other things away. So, um, you, with, with the, with the, uh. Monies that we were getting from you, of course, as well, we, um, you did include, from what I understand, from talking with Mrs. Minest. Did approve, uh, uh, two additional fine arts, uh, teachers. But primarily, we've been using that for after-school tutoring programs for all students, computer, commute, uh, community tutoring and my own reading. Now, I'm talking about two separate things in a sense here, uh, ESER funds as well as, uh, you know, funds from, from the city council. So in regards to the ESER fund, of course, we have, uh, we have allocated that money, uh, what I think is really important. With, uh, um, proving air quality. So we're, we're going to air condition every facility in our system. That doesn't currently have air conditioning. That includes all of the elementary gymnasiums, uh, and all of the middle school gymnasiums. Now, if y'all have ever been in some of these gyms in the, in the, in the summer months, you know, it's really hot in there. And we've never had air conditioning in those, in those, uh, facilities. It's my understanding that we're also going to. Uh, use that money to air condition some of the community centers, centers, gymnasiums, which we don't own, but y'all, as a city graciously allow us to use. Those at Thompson Elementary, those at Walnut Park Elementary. I believe that money's going to be used to, to, for that as well. So every facility that our children have access to, uh, that does not have air conditioning and filtration. We're using that, that, uh, ESER money for that purpose, uh, uh, along with, of course, the hiring of, uh. Of, uh, eight elementary intervention teachers, twenty-five special education aides, uh, one behavioral specialist. Two registered behavior specialists, five permanent sub substitutes. These are, these are physical, uh, uh. Bodies that we hired in terms of, uh, placing people in the classroom to help to make up for learning loss. Uh, we've hired additional nurses and various others to help support, uh, safety primarily, and of course, learning laws. Now, we've also had to maintain all of our mitigation, uh, efforts in terms of making sure that we, we are well stocked. And in sanitizing a- agents and and cleansing agents and masks and shields and. Everything that we've done in the past couple of years, we tried to enhance that, provide more of it, uh, with this third round of, uh, ESER funds. Um, one of the other areas that we were asked to address is, is mental health. We've had a, a lot of, uh. Uh, concerns about mental health in our, in our school system, and systems all around the country. As a matter of fact, many of these kids who have been the last eighteen months. Prior to the start of this school year at home have suffered some, have suffered quite a bit. And so we, we've employed mental health counselors and social workers as well. Um, don't really want to bring this up, but I know this was a hot button just a week ago. And, uh, you know, in terms of the so, the supposed terrorist attack at our school, that never happened, okay? But one of the things that we, we did discover was that, uh, parties involved in that situation. Uh, were, were individuals who probably needed some attention from social workers, maybe some mental health workers and so on. And we don't, we suspect that, you know, with all that idleness that our students have had to, uh, engage in over the last, uh. Uh, a year and a half roughly, there's probably a little anxiety that's come along with that as well. So we're having to address that on a, on a regular basis. Uh, again, you know, pay for fifteen, uh, fif- fifteen, uh. System-wide fine arts, uh, staff, you allow two others, so we have seventeen now. Um, getting the tutoring, we're doing after-school tutoring, we're doing, uh, uh, within, in, in the, in community centers. Uh, in, uh, boys' clubs, at schools and so on, plus we, we hire, uh, tutors for after-school tutoring. Uh, regularly, uh, during the, during the school, school year. Uh, we, we've included reading intervention programs such as Spire, for example, uh, with a primary focus on, on students with dyslexia. We, uh, we, uh, we've already mentioned six secondary intervention teachers. Um, I mentioned the barriers in the classrooms to help prevent the spread of COVID, and also the sanitizer stations in addition to. The sanitizing, uh, uh, oh, you know, formulas. And, um, you know, we, 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 we have in- increased our, um, professional development offerings. For our teachers to help prepare them for that learning loss. Uh, here at the local office, I have, uh, in an effort to. To, to prepare us for state monitoring, for state accreditation, and of course, to deal with the, uh, literacy act. Uh, we, you are familiar, uh, had a, a, a central office staff member to resign and and move elsewhere. I've used the ESER funds to hire an additional, uh, person to be assigned to just, uh, school improvement and accountability. So that I could, you know, provide more time for curriculum and instruction. So, uh, those of you who are familiar with the, the individual left, uh, you all probably are aware that, that two people have joined. Uh, have, have, have been hired in that particular place. We've made some adjustments, uh, around the school system with other. Individuals moving into administrative positions, and and let me say this to you, and none of that, is, is at any particular additional cost. Because I typically try to, uh, promote from within, therefore, I'm, I'm promoting people who already have benefits packets. Who already have a reasonable enough salary so that the person who left this position, uh, left with it enough, uh, funds. To take care of the, um, the, uh, promotions that we've, we've, uh, had in these last, uh, months. So, and so we continue to primarily try to make sure that our kids are being served on a regular basis. Uh, in, in the classroom. Um, we, just, just whatever resources, uh, become available that, that we, where we think we can enhance. Uh, they'll, though, that, that mitigation effort as well as that learning loss effort, we, we utilize it. We have been very fortunate to get a few grants here or there. You all familiar with our hippie program, for example, which has improved a little bit. That's a program that we've got that allows parents who are pregnant to start getting, uh, assistance with instruction for their unborn children. As well as those up until, uh, three years old. And that's kind of, uh, kind of a pre, preschool program that we've got. That's been working very well. We've been very successful with that. Um, again, I think I've already mentioned, you know, all the, the air conditioning and any other structural. Um, improvements we can make that are, that are allowed with those ESER funds. We have, uh, attempted to do, provided the budget, uh, provided for that. Uh, I think that pretty much covers much of what I want to share with you in, in anticipation of any questions you might have.
The Reddick, don't have any questions, just want to, uh, commend you especially for the, for your, uh, mask. Where, you know, mandating mask because, uh, even though people out there say it doesn't work, it does work. So want to commend you on, on that and, uh, and, uh, your presentation on, on how the funds that you're getting are. Being used. So just want to commend you on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Reddick, I'll likewise echo, uh, our appreciation of, uh, of how well you presented yourself. In response to some difficult questions and some difficult issues. Um, I think you've done an excellent job in terms of that. I, and I, I want to apologize because I'm about to put you on the spot with a question. Um, but I, but again, it, it's something that's come up in, in, at Thompson. Uh, I've received some unconfirmed reports about, uh, a water issue, uh, at, uh, at Thompson. Uh, can, can you help me understand if that has been, uh, resolved and, and what that may involve?
Yeah, I'm certain it has been. I'm not sure specifically whether you're talking about, because there's, there's been a couple of water issues who've come up. One has to do with whether or not students are, I don't know if this is the one you're talking about, are using water fountains to drink water or not. Because we're very thankful to, uh, the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority who's going to help us to alleviate that problem to start with, okay? But, uh, that was one issue, and then, then there was this, there probably some issue about whether there's the co- collection of water there. I'm not sure which one you're talking about, but in either case, Joe Billingsley handles all of that. Uh, I have not been called personally about it. So which, which one in particular are you referring to?
I honestly think it was the water fountain issue, uh, because, uh, because there were some. I honestly think it was the water fountain issue because there were some community groups that were supplying bottled water. So I think it was the water fountain issue.
Okay, so ever since last year, we've had water fountains turned off, okay? If water fountains are turned on at Thompson, that's something that I'll have to investigate and figure out why that's the case. I did have someone to call me and ask me about water fountains being used at the high school, for example. But all of our students and staff are supposed to know that they're not to use those water fountains. We have, we still have water available from last year. That's why we're extremely grateful that, you know, the sorority is going to help provide more. But not only that, but where we know that there is an issue in regards to that, we purchase that. See, that water is allowed to be purchased, and so we have water stockpiled now. So there shouldn't be any school that has any issue with kids not having drinkable water. And no, they should not be using the water fountain. I think, Mr. Worthy, what I guess I probably struggle with the most is that folks will get a hold to a story and next thing you know, it's on Facebook or whatever have you, and nobody calls the school system to ask about it. Again, let me reiterate, in regards to last week's fiasco, there was no threat of danger last week. Not even remotely, okay? I won't go into the details about what exactly happened, but it got way out of hand. Y'all have probably have seen my report in the newspaper and/or on our website explaining what that was all about without giving any detail specifically about persons or their disabilities or whatever have you. We handled it thoroughly. Unfortunately, a young teenager decided to take it up into his hands to really send out false information. I will say this, the day that the school was locked down, for example, it was a result of someone saying that there was a person in the school with a gun. We went to that person's house, that person was at home, in bed, asleep. So I don't see how they could possibly be in two places at one time, but that thing kind of grew and grew and grew. And hopefully, we've quelled some of it by the statement that I made on our website and in the newspaper. But there was never any time that any of our kids were in danger from Monday of last week until current. And we have that well under control. Was there a police investigation? Yes. Was there a school system investigation? Yes. You know, and that's all we can really kind of say about it.
I appreciate your response for sure, and again, I apologize. I probably should have been engaged with that question offline.
Well, that's okay. It allows me to inform you that, you know, Joe Billingsley, his team, on top of all that stuff. You know, any school who doesn't have water hadn't asked for it. And the reason they didn't ask for it, they don't have it, is because we don't know that they don't have it. Thank you.
Mr. Reddick, I want to echo the sentiments. Thanks for how you've approached this last eighteen months. You know, what a pandemic can do to a school system is, I guess we get to see it every day, but you and your board and your staff, I think, have done an admirable job of putting students first, keeping safety first. I have family members that work in the school system, so I know on a day-to-day basis what you go through and the challenges that you're faced with. So thank you for the stances that you take. Sometimes they're not very popular. We're all familiar with those kinds of stances, but, you know, to do the right thing, sometimes that's what happens. And so I also appreciate the partnership with the community centers. You know, it's great that the city and the school system can partner to have a community center built at a school and the students can use the community center gym during the day. And it's just, it's great to be able to partner with you guys. Thank you for being willing to provide air conditioning for those two locations. I think that'll go a long way in just being a better environment for everybody. So thanks, thanks again.
Councilman Worthy?
I was just going to say thanks, and I'm so relieved that you will be able to use some of that money for fine arts. Because, you know, I've been worried about that, and I've spoke with the mayor about it also and a couple of other people about it. So I'm just thankful that you will be able to use that. So I appreciate all the work you do.
Let me say this, Mr. Worthy, there was no way I was going to tell fifteen fine arts students, fine arts teachers, because of the fine job that they do, that you don't have a job anymore. First of all, couldn't do that anyway, especially those who are tenured. But we were going to manage one way or the other.
All right, thank you for coming, and we look forward in the future for your update again. Superintendent Reddick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else that come before the council at this time, we'll take a short break and we'll resume at eleven oh five, eleven oh five. Okay, good morning. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're meeting today by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and can also be viewed later on Comcast Channel ninety-nine, AT&amp;T Universe and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Councilwoman Back?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Cannon? And Councilman Reed? We have a forum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to leave the invitation today.
Let us pray. I must praise the heavenly Father, we thank you for the days you've given us, God. We thank you, Lord, for taking care of us, God, keeping us all safe, God. We pray for the people that's COVID, God, and the hospitals, God, and the nursing homes, the people's homes, God. We just lift all of them up to you, God. We ask for what you'll be with this city council meeting today, God, that you will be done in everything we do, God. We love you, God, we thank you for everything you do for us and everything you're going to do. We just love you, in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
All right, I'd like to begin this meeting with an update from the EMA, Emergency Management Director, Mrs. Deborah Gaither. Is she available?
Ms. Gaither, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
Mike, she doesn't appear to be muted. Well, now she is.
Hello?
Hello?
There you are.
Huh, okay. I'm going to be as quick as possible. Right now, our daily new cases are totaling sixty-five daily new cases. So that went up some. Infection rate has continued to drop. It's down now to zero point nine oh. So that's good to hear. That sounds like it contradicts each other, but once you sit down and look at the information, you can understand it. Positivity rate now stands at twenty point seven percent positive. Our ICU capacity is still up, my apologies. Our ICU capacity is still up. It looks like right now it's around ninety-five percent. So we may, between the two hospitals, have a few beds right now in ICU. That's another good point to share with everyone. The death rate per day over the last week is at three point three. So we continue to see Edwah County citizens dying each day with COVID. Vaccinations at this point, forty-two percent have received at least one dose. That brings us to thirty-three percent that are fully vaccinated. Vaccines are still continuing to be done across the county. We encourage everybody to educate themselves, look into the matter, talk with your doctors, your nurse practitioners, and see if this is an option for you. We encourage it. We want to get out of this downward slope before we get into the winter months. And bringing that up, I want to say everyone remember to get your flu vaccination. You can do that at the same time at most of the pharmacies when you get your COVID vaccine. So make sure you do that. The vaccination, Vaccinate Gaston update. Last Friday was the last day for Moderna shots to be given if you were going to get your second dose before October fifteenth. So then Wednesday is the last day for Pfizer. That's tomorrow. If you're going to get the Pfizer vaccine, you need to get it by tomorrow if you're participating in Vaccinate Gaston. That'll give you just enough time to get your second dose by October fifteenth. Then after Wednesday or anytime from now on, of course, you can do Johnson and Johnson. Those are few and far between to find, but the Edwah County Health Department has verified with us this morning that they have ordered more. So please check with the Health Department if you're planning on getting your shot between tomorrow and October fifteenth because Johnson and Johnson is the only one that you'll be able to do a dose of between now and then, unless you're going for your second vaccine of Moderna or Pfizer. Then also, as to numbers, there was reported this week's two hundred and forty vaccines given for Vaccinate Gaston. Now, I can't delineate for you whether it is first dose or second dose, but they were all for Vaccinate Gaston. That will bring our total up, let me see if I can move this over without leaving the screen, to fifteen ninety-five, one thousand five hundred and ninety-five. So I think that's a really good number. We're not through, encourage people to continue to do this. It only helps ourselves and our neighbors, our community. One thing I would like to mention, Atala is still doing Vaccinate Atala, and they have an event that's coming up that's not closed just to citizens of Atala, but it's Sunday, September twenty-fifth, and it's sponsored by several area churches. It's from noon until three at the Norris Museum and Events Center on Cherry Street there in Atala. They're doing free food, some Visa gift cards, drawings for two Apple iPads and two sets of Apple AirPods. So there's incentives everywhere if you're looking for it. We just want to remind everybody, just get vaccinated. Anybody have any questions?
Hey, Deborah, not that I would think about doing this, but if I wanted to take advantage of all of the various municipal programs by getting vaccinated once, is that possible?
By getting vaccinated what?
Yeah, so by getting fully backed one time, could I potentially take advantage of all? So not just Gaston, but Atala and any other municipal?
No, there has to be a fine art line somewhere, and the line is whether or not you are a citizen of the city of Gaston. Now, I can't tell you exactly how Atala is doing that, but I can find out and we can check on that. But I wouldn't think that they would be, a citizen of Gaston would be able to go in. And even if they got their shot there, because they had not had one, that they couldn't be in the drawings for these.
And I'm not suggesting that anybody would actually try that.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out there as a hypothetical.
Yeah, and that's a good hypothetical, and I'll bring it to Atala and see what their answer is, and I'll be glad to email you all.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, then we'll go to Chief Reed.
Good morning, Madam President, good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My report today, I only have two personnel out that are currently COVID positive. I have no one out on quarantine, so I feel that we're very fortunate for those numbers. Our number of PUI, or COVID inpatient persons under investigation, remains high. We ran twenty-four last week. I've heard three go out on the radio this morning. So it's been fairly consistent. We're running, you know, average four-day-ish. We continue to have our personnel wear masks when they go in public, unless they're going to be social distanced and we're wearing N95s and our PPE on calls. We are, though, especially this morning, still having a problem with our ambulance availability. And it's not the ambulance's fault. We've had a couple of calls holding this morning for a period of time due to inavailability of ambulances. So there is still an issue at the hospitals, and they are addressing it, trying to get these ambulances in service to get them out to our public. But we ran, like I said, twenty-four PUIs this week. That is slightly up from last week, but we'll see where we go from here over the next few weeks. I'm hoping it will start trending down slightly.
All right, any questions to Chief Reed? We just want to continuously to thank you for what you're doing, and especially the other firemen, let them know we do appreciate their services.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate what they do as well, and I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Madam President, I have one.
Yes.
Have you, Chief Reed, due to the ambulance unavailability, have you rethought or reevaluated maybe using the rescue squad?
Let me cut this radio down. Could you say that again, Councilman Worthy?
I said, have you reevaluated or thought about maybe using the rescue squad since the ambulances are low with unavailability? Have you thought about that?
What we have been doing in emergent situations, we have a reserve rescue truck that is equipped as an ambulance, and we've actually had to transport in it a couple of times. And the ambulance services are sending us an ambulance, sometimes with just a driver on it, and we're putting our paramedics in the back of the unit to transport. That is what we have been doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief, this is Deborah. Do you mind if I answer one portion of that question with Councilman Worthy?
Absolutely, go for it, ma'am.
Okay, if we added another provider to do transportation, because we've talked through this, is we would just be adding more people sitting in more vehicles at the hospitals. It wouldn't, the holdup is literally at the area hospitals, mainly one. And so that's the problem.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. I wasn't talking about adding another service, but Chief Reed know what I was talking about, but I don't want to put him on the spot, so we'll talk offline on that.
That's fine, Councilman, I'm used to being put on the spot, it's perfectly okay.
Chief Reed?
Yes.
Have you talked with the mayor about, I know, and I think it was December thirty-first, that the COVID stopped for the first responders, the fire department, the police, where they get paid if they come up with COVID? Have you talked to the mayor or somebody about trying to get that program back going since the first responders are right there fighting the COVID all the time, like the police and the firemen?
Yes, sir, there are discussions in progress right now about that, yes, sir, there are.
Okay, I was just going to make sure, because, you know, I know some of those first responders might not have the time, you know, the young guys might not have the time to take off if they've got COVID or something. They might lose pay or something, that's what I was kind of worried about.
Yes, sir, that has. Yes, sir, that has been an issue, and we are discussing it, myself and Mr. Payne. We have been discussing that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Reed, again. If there's nothing else, we will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on September the fourteenth.
So move. Second?
Clerk, we take the vote. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the tenth through the sixteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries uh to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. Proclamations, do we have any? We'll move to unfinished business. Our first unfinished business is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and this ordinance was presented last week for first reading and approves the following budgets. The general fund is fifty-three million, two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Our special revenue fund is eight million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Our debt service fund is eight million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Enterprise and internal service funds is thirteen million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Our capital project fund is eight million and one hundred thousand dollars. And our capital project fund two is seven million, two hundred thousand dollars. The general fund budget includes a four-step increase, which is five percent for all employees on the pay plan, making under twenty-five thousand dollars per year and a two-step increase, which is a two-point-five percent for those making over twenty-five thousand dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Back. I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Reed?
Yes.
I was going backwards there. Uh, motion carries to adopt.
Our next uh resolution is electing directors of the Etowah Gaston Healthcare Authority. This reappoints Marie Franklin Johnson for a term expiring December the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one and reappoints Rebecca Walker for a term expiring December the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing traffic enforcement agreement. And this is an agreement between the City of Gaston Police Department, each central high safety office and the City of Opalaka as a physical agent for grants related to traffic safety enforcement for the period October one, twenty twenty-one through September the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
So moved.
End of discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with Mytell. This is for the upgrade of telephones, hardware and software for various departments and buildings within the city. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
We have a first reading. Uh, this is an ordinance amending city code section eighteen-one dash one B relating to the rental property inspection. And the cost of inspection is fifty dollars for the initial inspection and one follow-up inspection. This raises the cost of any additional follow-up inspections from fifteen dollars to fifty dollars each. And this ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Uh, there is uh no new business. Uh, in the department reports is Mrs. Uh, I just have Mrs. Ross, are you on?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, my question that I'm asking is about vaccinate uh Gaston. Is there a, is there an ending date uh for that? Vaccinate Gaston?
Yes, ma'am, there is. So the last day of the program is October the fifteenth. And so that's why Deborah was uh clarifying a while ago that um, you know, at this point, you cannot get um the, there's only certain shots that you can get that will qualify you to be a part of the program. So uh, we're running the the program on Wednesdays and Fridays from eleven to four. Uh, we've been very busy. Um, we have had, as of the other day, I'm thinking right around nine hundred people who have received actually the hundred dollars qualified for the program. And according to her numbers, uh, it appears that we should be looking at uh somewhere around, I think she said twelve hundred or so. So we still have quite a few people that still have to get the second shot. Um, and like you said, at this point, you've got to get the the J and J, but the J and J is kind of limited as to where you can get it. But if they get the J and J, they would still qualify at this point. But the end date is October the fifteenth. And what our intent is, is that we will, uh, we're thinking about looking at doing it at maybe the venue. I know that I have talked with some of the council members and uh we definitely want to do it maybe on a council day. Uh, but have the, maybe have it at the venue where we do the drawings. Um, so we will do a drawing, um, maybe that that following Tuesday. Uh, at this point, we are up to two drawings because it's two drawings for every five hundred people. So we at, we have two drawings we know right now and I'm, I'm sure by tomorrow we will be at four drawings. Because we should go over the thousand people tomorrow.
Okay, the question that I'm uh asking, I know you said it would end uh so and I know that we designated a certain amount of money for vaccinate Gaston. So my question is, once this particular setting is over, will we do this again? Will we duplicate this again, say, start another one in January? I'm just asking.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, that is something that we're talking about and we're looking at because we're not going to spend all of the money. The money that we we allocated was was for twenty-five hundred people. And we're certainly not going to be near that number. So there will be funding left and uh discussion is going on now uh for us to continue the program. But we have to end it uh on the fifteenth and we have to do the drawings because that's what we've been telling everybody we were going to do.
Right.
But yes, ma'am. We are, we are in discussion.
All right. Well, very good, very good. Uh, at this time, we have two citizen requests. Uh, we have uh Mr. Howard Gilbert. Uh, he's want to speak to us on concerning the property on Gaston Avenue. So if you can get Mr. Uh Gilbert on.
I'm on. I am on. I thank the Lord for the great opportunity to come back up here and try to prove that y'all are wrong for not that okay in my life. I feel left out and I don't want that I am. Can y'all tell me? Who voted against me? Somebody did.
Sir. I'm, I'm sorry, sir. I think that I, I think the vote was actually unanimous by everybody on the council. And I think the logic was that there's a lot of residents in that neighborhood that didn't like the idea of having a construction yard in their residential property. And as a general rule, when you're surrounded by residential property like that and you had many, many people in your community that came and spoke out against it. And a lot of times what we do is we'll default to the zoning board. So the zoning board holds public hearings and allows the neighbors to come in and give feedback. So what happened was there was a zoning hearing. Several of your neighbors to the property came in and spoke out against it. Then that zoning board recommended to this city council that we not approve the the rezoning. And then this council unanimously conferred with the zoning board. So there wasn't one or two individuals, literally, most of the individuals in your neighborhood, the entire zoning board and the entire city council thought this was a bad idea. And I understand you're upset about it, but you got to agree that that's a pretty large consensus of people agreeing that this was a bad idea.
Y'all got one man that I recommended all them others come. And I feel like I'm an old maid and a little burst of song. I've been looked over and not looked at. Right across the street from my lot is a trailer that I'm wanting to put in there. I'm not going to have a truck coming in, man wants to put the trailer that story stuff in. All I want is council approved where y'all could be a commercial lot. I don't know why you give me a R two unless that thought that helped me. R two's got more and I ain't got a lot to build on one. But I'm an eye clip set and I want to ask you this. Starting with you, Mr. Jason, how would you feel with me? I swap places.
Uh, again, I, all I can tell you is that there's, there's a procedure in place here where there was an open public meeting where individuals came and gave feedback. Multiple individuals came and gave feedback that they were not in favor of this rezoning. And then the zoning board, which is designed to handle situations like this and make these decisions, said that it was not in line with with the city code and the zoning ordinances. And they recommended to the city council. So that's a whole separate board of individuals that recommended that that the council not approve this. And then and only then did the council depend on the recommendation of the zoning board and not approve it. So you're talking about some fifteen to twenty people that looked at this objectively and independently and said it wasn't a good idea.
Councilman, uh, council, councilman, councilman.
Mr. Edison had about five of his fellows up here and I saw the hell I had. I was in that council meeting too up here. So.
Sir, we talked about this over the phone and I told you that the district I represent and I told you I was doing what the people in that district wanted and I asked the council to uh vote the way that we voted. So if you want to be mad at anybody, be mad at me. But we're also working with Brian Harbison to remove that trailer that's over there in that lot because it doesn't supposed to be there. And Mr. Harbison is over nuisance and abatement and we are working that issue, okay, sir? And I I'm sorry that you feel the way you do, but I also, not only I, but the uh city clerk's office gave you the information. But if you don't like the uh what the procedures and what we did on the vote, you can go to circuit court. Now, we both explained that to you, okay, sir? But you have every right to come here and uh make your objection.
I'm gonna be the black sheep again because
Councilman William, Councilman William asked for a point of order.
Point of order, uh, Madam President, um, as I understand our rules of procedure, uh, he has the floor for five minutes to offer comments and he's not to address directly any council member. If there are any follow-up comments, uh, the council should uh reserve those for their comment period uh that comes later on the agenda.
All right. Uh, Ms. Nelson, has he used his five minutes?
I hope not. Madam President, I did put the clock on pause when council members were speaking, so um, he has a minute forty-two seconds left on his time.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gilbert, you have one minute and after then we will uh move to our next speaker.
Okay, I don't know, except for, but I I just feel like I've been discriminated against. And y'all know the definition of discrimination? I can tell you it's not being treated fair. And I feel like y'all have discriminated against me as a human being. Say what discrimination mean. Say, give me the definition of discrimination. I guess she's off. But it does not be treated fair. And I I pay my taxes like everybody else. And Boyd Edison is the main cause of that being created up here. He's been on my back ever since I acquired that property. And I don't like it and he don't like me and so I can't help that. And I, I, I just go out there and check on things and get my cussing from him about weekly and that's why too. But I mean, I just, I'm just let down and y'all, if y'all would let one man bang up that and get me not what I want. I'm not, I'll be the black sheep to Brian having making that man move up here. They'll, that'll be my fault. Wait and see. Y'all know who owned the trailer? Don't be stupid. I'll find out, Brian. I'm gonna go positize a man, tell him it's not my fault. It's Mr. Edison's fault. And y'all stay with Mr. Edison. I'm gonna go probably beat you to school house. My time up, lady?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We thank you for coming.
Well, I, I don't believe it done no good, but I enjoyed coming. I know when, all y'all talking about that COVID, that we don't get any shots for that COVID on the booster?
I don't know. We haven't, they, they haven't discussed it with the EMA and usually that's where we get our information from. But as soon as we find out about the booster, we'll put it out there for the public.
I certainly appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, our, our next speaker is uh Mrs. Uh, uh, Maness. And uh, before she comes, I want to say that uh I had talked with Ms. Maness several, several weeks ago. Uh, I also let her know that the uh school system would not be in the city budget. And I know we had been instrumental in helping with that program. Uh, so I told her to come and talk to the city council. I made no promises to her. I just told her to come and talk about her program and whatever the council does. Uh, as far as that is concerned, that was the council, but I wanted you all to know that I asked her to come to speak uh concerning her program. So Ms. Maness, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Toles. At this time, I'd like to thank you for the support given to the students in Gaston City Schools and the Gaston City community areas. I am here to ask for continual support of the following programs. The programs that I am asking support for is the before and after-school tutoring for all students, tutoring in the community centers, the Mayon reading program, and the funds that were given that we utilized to implement two additional fine art
the Mayon Reading Program, and the funds that were given that we utilized to implement two additional fine arts teachers in the elementary schools. My request comes because of this. Mr. Reddick gave a report earlier today in reference to our ESER funds. Those funds specifically addressed the bottom ten percent of earning loss. The funds that you provided to the Gaston City Schools really benefited all students throughout the city of Gaston. With these funds, we were able to provide tutoring to all students. The ESER funds, the summer camps that were had, the lit camps that were implemented last year, only allowed the bottom ten percent of our students to participate. With the funds that you gave Gaston City Schools, we were able to provide tutoring in the community housing at every school before and after school. These things benefited parents who did not have necessarily the resources to provide tutoring, to pay for tutoring for their children. It also allowed us to provide tutoring in the community housing areas because some of these parents didn't have transportation to pick them up for allowing them to attend tutoring in school. We put tutoring in the Boys and Girls Club. The Mayon Program was a program that um the mayor was instrumental in helping us uh implement throughout the community. This allowed our parents that had communication barriers to be able to read with their kids, for their kids, um, to their kids. So what I am asking, if there's any ways possible, if you all would continue to support these programs. I understand we were cut out of the budget, but if there's any way that we could continue these programs in any way, I ask for that support. I have the data to show that those programs really increased learning in Gaston City Schools. They did. Um, students at schools that are Title I schools, they don't get the benefits of always having the parental parents with re- resources to help do fundraisers. Parents are in crisis now because of the mere fact that, you know, some of them are not working. The COVID environment has limited a lot of them from being able to even do fundraisers going door to door. So yes, Gaston City Schools has received money for funds, but we have also lost a lot of funds that we would typically have. I know that the city of Gaston, you council members, the mayor, you all have been very supportive of us and our program. And the past three years, we have really benefited from these programs. And I am just asking that if you have any funds available, would you please consider supporting these programs in any way possible? And once again, I thank you for your support. All right, thank you, Ms. Miness. Okay. At this time, we'll have comments from the uh mayor and council. Uh, is the mayor on?
I'm on. I, I don't really have any comments exactly except uh just a lot of things happening all over the city and not only here and every place, but uh you know, we just have to try to do the best we can and hold it together till we can get past some of this.
All right, Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything today.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say that I'm proud of being a part of the budget this year. It looks really good and, and more so I'm proud because it appears that a lot of cities uh picked up on this budget of ours and uh brought forth about the same benefits for their people. And I think once again, Gaston has led the way.
Okay, Councilman William?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'd like to just take, take the opportunity to, to thank the council for uh passing the budget. Uh, this is probably one of the more complicated budget scenarios that we've been through in some time. Uh, it's definitely one of the largest, but I think there was some creative um, uh, some creative thinking and creative activity that went into ensuring that we took care of some priorities this, this, this year uh in this budget cycle. Not the least of which was making sure that we gave some level of remuneration to those people who worked, continued to work and put themselves at risk during the pandemic scenario. So I do appreciate that. And uh, um, I, I, I do want to again thank the uh finance department for engaging in uh, in, in, in something, something greater than uh, than just a notion that we uh, that we do something um, that we, that we, that we compensate them above just a uh, a number or hour. Uh, I, I think again, the, the creative thinking allowed us to do something much, much greater than that. And I think our employees have benefited from that. So again, I appreciate that. And what I will say to Ms. Miness, I do appreciate what she presented and I think she is spot on in uh, in what she's presented. And much as, much as we have done in the past with uh, with things like uh the three hundred thousand bucks that went towards security uh and some other things that we've done outside of our normal budget cycle. Uh, I've actually been engaged in active discussions with the mayor's office about what we might be able to do for the, for the school systems after the budget cycle. Uh, obviously, we're, I'm only one vote, so I'm not in a position uh to make any promises as it relates to that. But I could assure you that the mayor's office has been open uh to discussion about things that we may be able to do to support the uh, to support the school systems after our budget cycle. And uh, and of course, I, you know, as the finance director, I'll continue to have those discussions with them and uh, and we'll follow the path that we followed in the past to make sure that we are responsive when they need us. So uh, so again, any notion that we haven't done that is contrary to history. So, so again, I appreciate this council and what they've done. We don't all agree on every aspect of this budget, but I do appreciate the fact that we're mature enough to pass it because there are a lot of good things in this budget. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Worthy?
First, Madam President, I'm gonna have to apologize for laughing uh when Mr. Howard uh was speaking. I got several texts saying I shouldn't be laughing and, and that's true. I, I shouldn't have been, I, I tried to hold it, but when he went from uh getting on us to talking about the booster shot, that, that was a little funny to me. So, but I shouldn't have been laughing. So I apologize to you, Mr. Uh Howard Gilbert for laughing. But uh, uh, like people said, you don't, you don't get everything in the budget that you want. And that's a negotiation, but I still think we should have gave something to the school, even though they got that other money. It's just the message that we're sending. And uh, uh, I'm gonna just leave it at that. But uh, uh, thank you again.
Uh, Councilman Ba?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I want to thank uh Ms. Miness and Mr. Reddick for coming today to share with us. And I echo uh Councilman Worthy and Councilman Williams especially about uh speaking with the mayor that once things kind of, the dust settles, that maybe we can sit down and see what the uh, the tutoring and the Mayon and the two fine arts teachers positions, what that would total and see if there's a way uh that, that we might, could address that at, at some level. Um, yeah, but I, I think it is, you know, it's, it's been a unique time for everybody, the last eighteen months. And the federal money that's come in, in, in the, in, under the guise of, of COVID money, uh, does present some opportunities. It is restrictive in that you can only spend it in certain areas. And that, that uh kind of handcuffs you on how you can uh deliver that money. Uh, I think uh Lisa Ross, or the mayor's office, department heads have done a, a, a really good job of trying to filter that money to where it's needed the most. You're never going to make everybody happy in that process. There's things that are not in this budget that I had requested that I wanted to see. Um, so you know, I'm not happy either. And so it's uh, but it's just part of, of the give and take of government and it's part of uh trying to move our, our city forward. Uh, but I, I do want to clarify, there, there is money in the, in this new budget for the Gaston City School System. Uh, we are spending one million eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars in debt service. That's comprised of, and that's, these are round numbers, but approximately nine hundred and sixty thousand that we make in an annual payment for the uh twenty-nine million dollar bond that was taken out in two thousand and three. We're paying off a balloon note this year uh in the budget, six hundred thousand dollars. There's a two hundred thousand dollar stadium bond payment that's included in that, basically one point nine million in the budget this year for the school system. And then historically speaking, from the uh, each council member has a twenty-five thousand dollar discretionary fund, as does the mayor. And historically, about seventy, seventy-five percent of, of our monies goes toward education. So that represents about a hundred and thirty thousand this year. And those, those numbers total up to uh basically almost one point nine million dollars that are in this year's bud- budget. Yes, we did not, I'm line item the nine hundred thousand that we did the previous year, but it was kind of under discussion or understanding that with the, with the COVID money that the school board received, this was my understanding, that they were able to move some things around and to cover certain areas that uh, that would help us take that money uh and put it back into our budget, which we did this year. I mean, we gave raises that totaled over a million dollars that are sorely needed. Um, we have uh, uh, probably almost doubled our paving allotment this year. Uh, it's going to be around four point four million dollars. And so that's, that's important. Uh, we, we can never have enough money in uh paving. So, you know, there's just, I think bottom line, there's never enough money. And uh, so we, we've tried to spread it out just as, as evenly as possible. And I'm, I feel certain that when the federal money, this COVID money uh goes away, then I'm sure the city administration and the council at that time will come back to funding the school system at the level that they, that they're um accustomed to, in addition to the debt payments that the city makes on behalf of the school system currently. So, and I, and I'm proud that we're making those debt payments. I agree with everybody's comments that we should be a part in, a partner rather, with our, our school system. And, and I think that, that we do. And I think that's evident in, in how the city stepped up and helped to pay for the new high school uh and helped to build the stadium. Uh, the track and the soccer fields were paid with HUD money, uh, and then the career tech building. So very proud that the city was able to do that. That's critically important for our students. And uh, and I think we, I think we have a pretty good partnership with our, with our school system. So uh, with that being said, um, also, also in the budget, I was excited to see there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've allocated for mental health unit that Judge Scott Hassel presented to the uh mayor's office. This is going to be a, a two-person team that'll be able to go out and assist uh sheriff's department and police departments with mental health cases. This should alleviate uh some of the pressure on our uh policemen and sheriff's deputies when they're dealing with people that have mental health issues. These people in that vehicle will be uh, that's what they do. They're trained to work with people that have mental health issues. So I, that's another great way that the city's partnering in this budget with our county. And uh, I think we're all real excited about that and see how that's going to work out. I think it's kind of a test case too. It's been successful in other cities. And I think that the, the thinking is if, if this is successful, then perhaps there could even be maybe another unit that could be deployed that would, that would uh help with the mental health issues that we're encountering. Uh, it's no secret, our police department and first responders deal with probably more mental health calls and issues than they ever have bef- bef- before. And it's really critical to get the people out there on the street that really know how to deal with that and make the assessment so we can give and offer the best care for all of our citizens. So thankful for Judge Hassel for bringing that idea forward to the city. And we're very glad to partner with him. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
All right, and Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Madam President. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I didn't get a chance to say last uh week, and I said it to him in the RSVP meeting, but just liked uh for the city to know that uh Craig, uh Scott, our librarian director, he's really known throughout the state. And when I was at the conference in Huntsville for the uh league, the guy that represents the state was commending him for the things that he do and how he has put Gaston on the map. And so I really do want him to know that we appreciate as a city council and as a city, the things that he do for the uh public library. And I, I would just also like to say that uh, uh, education, you know, Mr. Reddick referred to social media and the things that social media says, and even the journal writing. And I think ones was said that uh, uh, I didn't like education or I, I am a advocate of education. I support education uh and I uh enjoy education. And ninety-eight percent of my funds go to the students. And so for social media and for journal writing, uh, to adhere to the fact that I don't like education, love education. Uh, I'm a part of the Gaston City School System and I put my talking, uh, my actions where my talking is. I go in the schools and I volunteer in the schools. So my question to those out there who do a whole lot of talking, are you in the schools? Do you go in the schools? Are you just talking to grocery stores? Or you just talk on social media about what somebody else does or does not do? And so I just want to say that I do. Uh, that's the reason why I asked uh Ms. Miness to come because I know the city does have a heart. The city cares for education. And so therefore I told her to come and to see what the city can do. We just didn't write off the programs because children need to know how to read if they don't do anything else. So at this time, I thank the council for a good council meeting this morning, good representation. And I call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll move.